City, uh, city council meeting for Monday, September twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, six P. M. Roll call, please.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Uh, Councilor Casper?
Here.
Hinton?
Here.
Coleglan?
Here.
Kuz?
Present.
Mark?
Here.
And Parsons?
Here. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you all for joining us this evening. Um, we're entering fall. Uh, our next agenda item is actually the consent agenda, and it's the Oregon Liquor Control Commission, uh, application for limited on-premise sales liquor license for, uh, G Pizza, Glue Cheese Pizza, LLC. And that's the only item on the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilor Kuz, is it? Thank you. Any discussion?
I'm just curious, is this because, um, Gucci's has a new owner?
Correct. Any, any other questions? All right. Roll call, please, or, uh, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay. Hearing none. Thank you very much. Uh, this is a time for comments from citizens present on agenda and on agenda items. Let me first read, uh, Article One, Section Eight of the Oregon Constitution provides, "No law shall be passed restraining the free and expression of opinion or restricting the right to speak, write, or print freely on any subject whatever, but every person shall be responsible for the abuse of this right. Be advised, statements and comments by citizens under comments for citizens present or on public hearings or public comment items are solely the opinions and statements of the speaker, speakers, and are not statements by the city of Lincoln City and do not represent the opinions of the city, its officers, and employees." We have, uh, how about, I'm assuming, you want to come forward and speak? Since we have someone, more than someones in the audience? If you'd provide your, just your name, would be great.
Carol Colfield, can you hear me all right?
Yep. Uh, Carol, you might pull that down, though, to you.
My, how?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, live in Lincoln City. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, council members and Mayor Anderson. Uh, I live in a, near, well, near my house is an upper-scale neighborhood, and there are two private residences that are using city property for an egress to their homes. The design of the driveways into these homes was poorly planned and never should have been approved by the planning department, and as a result, city property, which my tax dollars goes to support, is being used to make it easier for these two private residences to access their property. Trees and plants that the city planted when they built the pump house were also destroyed in the building of one of these homes by the excavator. It is completely unfair to every resident of the city that these residences are able to use taxpayer property for their own use. All that is needed is for the subdivision to replace the plants and trees they destroyed along the edge of the property. This would solve this issue. Exactly how much city property are residents allowed to use for their private homes, simply to make it easier to access their property? Thursday, September nineteenth, two planning department men were at these two homes. They even used the city property to enter and leave these homes. It's not necessary for these homes to use the city property. It is out of sheer laziness, self-serving, and a complete disregard for others that the private driveway was designed this way. If this city driveway, and it's the pump house at the corner of Southwest Coast and Southwest Twenty-Fourth Street, if this pump house driveway was a private residence, this would not be happening. And I do have pictures, uh, I took one today, and it showed, they tried to put bark dust, try, well, you'll be able to see what, what the subdivision did. They tried to put a little bark dust there, but you'll see in my photos tire tracks that are going over the blacktop of the city driveway. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Great. Thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, Carol, would you share that with, uh, the clerk? I would appreciate it. And, and Carol, if you could, the, the other question I, I would have is, um, is this the first we've, you've made the city aware of this?
Uh, no, I sent Stephanie an email a couple months ago. No reply, but I did send a couple of emails today to, uh, Stephanie and Lindsay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for allowing me to talk.
And Kevin Colfield?
My name is Kevin Colfield, and I live in Lincoln City. Yeah, what's going on across the street is, it's not right. It's, you know, we don't expect life to be fair, but, um, in a vacuum, uh, people that cheat do, often do very well for themselves, but, um, anyway, I'm here for something different. So, for something completely different. Uh, a few weeks ago, there was an article I read in the paper about the water sewer rates that is being, uh, apparently studied for, um, a rate change with, uh, Home Gardens. And, and I'm glad, I'm glad somebody's thinking about things like this. But two hundred square feet is a lot of space. We don't use that much. We've got, uh, planted fruit trees and, uh, what we call a greenhouse that we use, but we produce tomatoes and cucumbers and, and whatnot. We've got about a hundred square feet that we use, and we do a lot of outdoor watering. And actually, until, until a bear was sighted in Glen Eden, this was a popular topic on the, uh, Next Door Nelscott site, if anybody's familiar with, uh, community page. Um, a lot of people, people notice their water bills. Um, I really don't know how some people get a three hundred dollar water bill, but, um, it's something, and, and I commented to other people that, you know, about the article in the paper that it's being looked at over the next few weeks, and, you know, that they should come to the council meeting and, uh, say something about it, but, at any event, um, you know, I think it's a great idea to give people an adjustment that when water doesn't go into the sewage system. And, um, you know, maybe there's other ways that people that use less than two hundred square feet could benefit from something like this. Maybe, um, maybe private residence bills could be averaged over the non-peak, uh, months. Um, you know, it's certainly, you know, in an ideal situation, you'd have, you'd have two water meters, but, you know, it's far too late for, and, and that's, but, nothing's ideal. But I'm, I'm glad it's being looked at, and, um, you know, my main comment is, maybe, you know, people would be able to apply for this adjustment if it, if it, however it happens, and, um, somebody could come out and verify it, or you can verify it with pictures or, or something. You know, we use about a hundred square feet, um, not including the fruit trees, and, and we use a lot of water in the summer, and, and it goes into the ground. And, and, you know, it, you know, the water we get clearly comes through the city system, but the, the wastewater isn't going into the, to the city drainage. So, um, that's about all I've got. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm glad to see that, that, you know, something like this is being thought about, and, and I appreciate it.
Well, thank you for coming, 'cause you're exactly right, people need to come forward and talk to us, that's what this time is for.
I don't see many of them.
That's right. Thank you. If there's anyone else that, uh, wasn't able to sign up and wishes to make a comment, now would be the, the time. Seeing none, we'll move on then. And what we've got next on our agenda is, uh, public hearings. We have a, uh, one public hearing, CPA two thousand nineteen dash oh-two, North Lincoln City Mixed Use. And in your staff report, you saw the staff is recommending us or requesting us to move or reschedule this public hearing to, uh, October fourteenth, two thousand nineteen. I guess the question would be if there's anybody in the audience that came specifically for, um, this hearing? And nobody so indicating, so it would be easy to, to move. Are you talking to this Les, uh, Leslie? You know?
I'm okay with you handling this if you'd like, Mayor.
As I look at your name thing. So, you don't have any, any comments?
No, um, the Planning Commission did complete their recommendation of the September seventeenth meeting for these two new land use designations. Uh, staff is proposing October fourteenth, uh, solely to the point that we have, uh, rescheduled and postponed the design standards to October twenty-eighth's meeting, recognizing that's a large ordinance. We're trying to balance your Monday evenings for you.
So, I would entertain a motion, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I move to hold the public hearing on October fourteenth, um, twenty thousand nineteen.
Second. We have a, uh, motion with a second from Councilor Parsons to reschedule the, um, public hearing on North Lincoln City Mixed Use to October fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, this time and this place. Is there any deliberation, thought, questions? Here? Yep, go ahead.
Could I ask a question? I was gonna hold it, but I thought I could ask right now. There was an attachment to this, and I wasn't quite sure what, um, the National Coast Trail Association was really asking. Were they asking for a zone change? Were they asking this to be incorporated into this big comp map that you're working on? I mean, I didn't know how to read this, and, and I have a number of questions about it, but I won't go into that right now. I just, if you could help me understand, what is this?
Yeah, they wanted to provide some comments about opportunities for additional passive recreation in the area. Um, I proposed them to email me, and I could include it into the packet. Um, there was a, there was not a pro or con, uh, context that I read in the letter myself.
If I may?
Yes.
This came from that Trail Gap meeting that I had. He was an attendee, and then that's how that came to Lindsay, is that, and also with that. So that's where I was like, well, here's who to talk to, and he has the ideas of how best to create and maintain a trail. Is that correct? Right.
There's, there's some questions in all of this, though, for me, and a number of them, but I couldn't tell.
Fortunately, you'll be able to get to ask all those when we actually have the public hearing, and then.
I just wanted to know where it came from, what it was, and what they were asking.
Yeah, it's my fault. Just kidding.
Okay, that explains everything.
The motion.
So, no, Al's very passionate, and.
So back, back to, back to business, which is the motion on the table, which is to reschedule this to October fourteenth. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed with a nay. Hearing none, October fourteenth. And, okay, we have another public hearing, and this is, uh, public hearing on Z O A two thousand nineteen dash oh-seven, Statutory Development Agreements. It is now, uh, six sixteen P. M. The public hearing for file Z O A two thousand nineteen dash oh-seven is now open. This public hearing concerns a city-initiated proposal to amend Title Seventeen of the Lincoln City Municipal Code by adding a new chapter, seventeen point nine-six, Statutory Development Agreements. The object of this chapter is accomplished by providing procedures and standards for development agreements to be entered into between an owner, developer, and the city of Lincoln City. The chapter may only be used in development agreement qualifying future land use map designations identified in the, in Lincoln City Comprehensive Plan or with qualifying Pearl zoning districts. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this matter on August twentieth, two thousand nineteen, and forwarded a recommendation as outlined in the council communication. The city council's role in this legislative process is to consider the Planning Commission's recommendations, any written or oral testament, as well as information from staff, and make a final decision as to the new ordinance. The city council may adopt the Planning Commission's recommendation or may take other action, including declining to adopt the new ordinance. The city council must take a few moments to cover the, to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the council wish to declare a conflict of interest in this matter? Seeing none, thank you. The substantive, substantive criteria that apply to this hearing include the statewide planning goals, the city's comprehensive plan, and the applicable provisions of the city's zoning ordinance. Comments and testimony should be directed to these criteria or to other criteria that you believe may apply to the subject of this hearing. Before the staff presents a report, I would like to summarize the adopted public hearing procedures. The staff will present a report and respond to any questions. After that, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If council members have questions, your time responding to any questions will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up sheet in the, at the entrance. Please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name only. You, if you also have a written testimony to submit to the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. Will the staff present the report?
Thank you, Mayor Anderson. Lindsay Zamel, Planning and Community Development Director here for Lincoln City. Um, in short here, the Oregon state law authorizes city council to negotiate development agreements for municipality purposes of, of the, uh, development of land, as long as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinances. Uh, Oregon state law allows up to a fifteen-year, um, what is the word I'm?
Time period.
Vesting for the time of, uh, development to occur after a development agreement is executed. Uh, development agreements are not quasi-judicial. They are legislative matters that are negotiated at a staff level and presented to city council for consideration, uh, through adoption of a resolution. Tonight, um, while the Oregon state law outrightly authorizes development agreements upon my starting here at Lincoln City, it was something that I wanted to put within our municipal code so that it is very clear where we do or do not allow deviations to occur. Uh, while this language, um, does, as currently drafted, talks about considering allowances or deviations in the focal points of the Pearl districts, uh, there is not authorizing language in the municipal code right now for this. Uh, ultimately, we are starting with the chapter for statutory development agreements, and then we would look towards, um, the legislative and leadership for what areas of the municipal code and comprehensive plan do we want to potentially allow some of these, uh, negotiated agreements in. Um, that concludes my staff report. Mayor Anderson went over the history of the project as it was with Planning Commission. Um, and at this point in time, I'm available for questions.
Uh, Your Honor?
Yes.
Just, just to add, um, I, I obviously have been involved with this, and, um, this is just another tool in your toolbox. Um, the state law provides us this tool. Um, this flushes out the tool somewhat, puts some meaning on some of the words, and, um, and you will have a sample development agreement before you for approval and a resolution that says, hey, here's our standard form. Mister developer, start with this. Show us your additions and things you want to propose. So this just adds some flesh to the bones of what, uh, the statute allows. The ordinance, or, or this ordinance says a development agreement, uh, has to be approved by ordinance. That's how the statute reads. And, um, there, as Lindsay pointed out, there's really flexibility, there's a requirement to be consistent with your, your code and your comp plan, except where your comp plan allows you to vary. And so, um, we're proposing in the, uh, matter that you just continued to allow that district to allow use of negotiated development agreements, and we're talking about allowing it in other districts. So, uh, the principle is it's gonna be consistent with your comp plan and your zoning, and hopefully there'll be incentives for people to use development agreements because you can gain flexibility. An example I use is that, um, in one of the jurisdictions I worked in, they said, all, all wetlands have to have a fifty-foot buffer around them. But if you have a negotiated development agreement, you can have an average fifty-foot buffer. So you can have it eighty feet in one place and forty feet in others, so as long as you comply. So there, there was flexibility given to negotiated agreements that was not given to straight subdivisions. And where you have the opportunity to do something by right in a straight subdivision, quasi-judicial, facts apply to the law, compliance or non-compliance, and you have an opportunity as an alternative to negotiate, then you truly have a, a true negotiated agreement, and, and when you fail to come to an agreement, that's a legislative decision, and there's no appeal from the denial of a legislative act. So, the city, when we enter into negotiated agreements like this, if it doesn't work out, there is no appeal.
If I, um, thank you, Richard, for getting into a little more of the, the weeds. I'll, I'll add to some of that. In addition to allowing additions or flexibility, development agreements can also, um, streamline or limit what an allowance could be. So say an applicant came in and applied for a comprehensive plan map amendment, but the request that they wanted would allow twenty uses that could have negative detrimental effects on the neighborhood, and the one use they want, maybe the Planning Commission or city council could find that it didn't have the same negative effects. A development agreement, a development agreement can limit as well as expand opportunity.
Mr. Mayor? Yes? One more comment from the staff. One of the things that, uh, Richard mentioned that is important for me to bring up is that this is a tool in the toolbox and not a requirement in the toolbox, that we still want to make sure that, uh, there's the understanding that if somebody does not want to go into a negotiated development agreement, they can still follow the path of any other, of a regular subdivision and just comply with the city's requirements for that subdivision. So as you mentioned, it gives us flexibility to work with developers, but if they, if they don't want to go through that route, they don't have to go through that route.
One last comment, that, as Lindsay said, you can limit things, but you can also commit to things. So let's say you want to be annexed, and, uh, we say, well, we don't need another residential subdivision, we have plenty of residential land, look at our building inventory. You say, well, what if I, what if I committed to workforce housing? And then we could say, oh, wait, actually, we have a need there. And you, so you can commit to meet a certain need. So that's one of the reasons why this tool's available. They can contractually commit to something and meet a need which otherwise we wouldn't, we don't need more land, sorry, your annexation is denied. But if you can commit to what we need, it makes it more palatable.
So I, I might remind councilors that, uh, actually, in, uh, your staff report referenced the first ordinance on, uh, that we come up next is the ordinance that, uh, has to do with this, this issue. So hopefully you, you read that and read through it. But I guess, uh, one of the questions I had, and, and Richard, you brought it up, I was a little confused, 'cause we've used or attempted to use this agreement, um, development agreement on other issues, and annexation was certainly one of them. I guess the question I would have with annexation with, is the fifteen-year timeframe? So the development agreement is good for fifteen years, as I understand.
It can authorize a development timetable that has a fifteen-year timetable.
And that is a maximum, so it's negotiated opportunity for things to occur sooner.
Usually, though, so I'm, I'm looking for, um, what happens if, uh, non-compliance of the agreement after it's annexed?
What I've, what I've seen in, uh, past jurisdictions I've worked in is that there are riders in there, that if, if steps in the process are not completed by the liable party, that it, um, like in this case, you would then, the annexation would be ineffective upon them not acting on their parts of the agreement.
The, the terms of the development agreement itself, in fact, the statute says, what is the effect of things like annexation? So you would address in the agreement, and I've seen it done different ways in different jurisdictions. But one way to do with it, one way to deal with it is to say, development is not authorized. So if, if you violate the terms of your agreement, there is no development authorized. So you're kind of stuck. You have to come in, you have to fix the non-compliance, um, and you can't go forward. I've seen other jurisdictions say, we will process an amendment to de-annex you and change your land use designation and re-zone you. So you can provide in the development agreement itself what remedy you want to choose.
'Cause that, the fifteen-year timeframe kind of bothered me, uh, on the other side. I could see it gives flexibility to your developer, but, uh, I want to make sure the city still had control.
And, and, and there is, uh, provisions for, uh, compliance review and enforcement built in. Uh, one of the things that I, I stated in the staff report, and this might be in the ordinance staff report, is that, um, I'm only asking for first reading of this ordinance today because we continued the other, uh, ordinance, uh, the North Lincoln ordinance, which includes an amendment to the comp plan, which addresses development agreements as well. So, uh, I don't want this one to get too far ahead of that one. So, uh, if you do proceed with first reading after this, uh, I'm not asking for second reading today. We're gonna slow it up and match it to the other one. Plus, the language, I think, needs to be clarified to address the annexation, uh, issue, 'cause we've, while we've talked about, you know, maybe amending the Pearl districts to allow development agreements, uh, and we've talked about annexation, and it's specifically mentioned in the, in this ordinance, it's not actually mentioned in the text amendment that's the one you just continued. So we have to address that.
Questions? Other, other questions?
I just had a question, and I've been searching for it, and I'm missing it. I just was curious about what the, um, changes the Planning Commission made to your original language, but I'm not sure what's what.
There, there were no amendments from the Planning Commission recommending.
Oh, that's why I can't find them.
There were comments from the, the chair, um, but they were mostly, uh, corrections and word issues.
So, no, okay.
They did, they did miss something. Uh, Councilor Casper found that I referred to planned unit development as planned development numerous times throughout the agreement, and that's 'cause sometimes I forget what jurisdiction I work for, so. Um, and so I will revise it for the second reading to make sure it's consistently planned unit development, which is what our code uses.
The other question I had, and it's, 'cause I knew we had done, um, these development agreements before, I guess I'd never seen the statutory in front of it. Is, is that something that's different from just a? Is that something that's different from just a?
It's kind of been, it's ORS Chapter 94, Organized Statutes. And the reason why we started referring to them at a staff level as statutory development agreements is because you have a consultant that regularly does disposition in development agreements, and he's working with your economic development and urban renewal director. And so in order not confuse which kind of development agreement we're talking about, we started referring to these as statutory development agreements.
And then finally, I did notice on going through that there were two different, in the packet references, two different ordinances, you know, on page, packet page 41, 2019-24. And then, and then on this one version, it has, on page 23, it's the 30, 2019-30.
So I see 2019-30 on packet page 41.
Yeah, if you look at the bottom of the text, the heading, you know, where it has dark, see right at the bottom of that? And I didn't know why it referenced a different, at that point.
I believe that's just a scribner's error, we'll need to correct.
You're talking about the findings?
It's in the title of the ordinance on packet page 41.
But the one?
You're right. It's actually just, it's just a typo sitting there.
Because, yeah, the one you staged as the actual ordinance was correct. I just wondered if I missed something, if it came from planning or something. Trying to see something by it. Other questions? If not, then we'd move to close, or not close, I need to ask for it. Now's the time for public comment. If anyone in the audience wishes to make a public comment, I don't see anybody moving to the microphone. Is there anyone in the audience who did not sign up but wishes to speak? Is there any comment from representatives of public agencies? Is there, if there is no further comment, is there a motion to close the public hearing and the record?
So moved.
We have a motion to close the public hearing and the record.
Second.
And we have a second by Counselor Casper. Any discussion? All those in favor of closing the hearing and the record, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay? Hearing none. Thank you very much. Is any further deliberation, anything from council? Okay. Why don't we then move to the ordinance?
Your Honor, counsel, this is first reading of ordinance 2019-30, an ordinance amending Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 17, zoning to add a new chapter, 1796, development agreements to establish procedures and requirements for consideration and approval of statutory development agreements. Ask for approval of first reading and setting second reading for October 14th.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Counselor?
Hinton.
Hinton.
Me.
Sitting next to me. And a second from Counselor Hoagland. Any questions, deliberations, talk further about the actual ordinance? Roll call, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And even though it was anonymous, will delay until October 14th after, to match up with the comp plan wording?
Thank you.
If that's all right? Consensus?
Yes.
All right. We have next ordinance.
Your Honor, counsel, this is first reading of ordinance 2019-27, an ordinance of the City of Lincoln City, amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title IX, Public Peace, Morals, and Welfare, Chapter 934, signage, Section 934020, temporary signage exempt from land use permitting, Paragraph F, to affirm, extend, and reinstate the allowance for feather banners for an additional six months. Counsel, ask for approval of first reading, and if it's unanimous, we'll continue. Essentially, this is something that you directed that we revisit. The expiration of the allowance in both Chapter 934 and Title 17 for feather banners being substituted for flags is on October 8th. This proposes to extend that allowance until April 8th, to give staff more time to work on the sign ordinance. Because this will not, ordinance will not be effective absent an emergency enactment until 30 days, it extends and reinstates and affirms the allowance. So just to be clear, we won't be issuing any citations for those during interim.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve first reading of ordinance 2019-27.
Second.
We have a motion from Counselor Hoagland and a second from?
Remember me?
Counselor Hinton. You need a tag.
You need them on the back.
Yes.
You need like a quarterback sleeve thing where you look down.
And I hate to digress, but you know, if staff gave us a, gave me a board here with lights, you know, that I could have the names pop up and turns the mic on or off, with their name on it.
So isn't it cool to have an IT department?
It is. I'm waiting.
Wait for a screen.
I digress. We have a motion and a second on the first reading. Roll call, please.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
And Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Your Honor, counsel, this is second reading of ordinance 2019-27, an ordinance of the City of Lincoln City, amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title IX, Public Peace, Morals, and Welfare, Chapter 934, signage, Section 934020, temporary signage exempt from land use permitting, Paragraph F, to affirm, extend, and reinstate the allowance for feather banners for an additional six months. Ask for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I make a motion to approve second reading and adopt ordinance 2019-27?
Second.
We have a motion from Counselor Hoagland and a second from, was it?
It was me.
Counselor.
Oh, man.
Boy, she's really jumping in tonight. Thank you, Counselor, for that second. Any further discussion, new discussion? Roll call, please.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And Casper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ron, could you just take a moment and give a degree of comfort to council and the public that this isn't just a kick it down the road a ways the can of signs and banners? That you actually have done a great deal of work and?
We do. We've actually done quite a bit of work. And first of all, just let me point out that we are having a work meeting coming up on October 7th that will be dealing with this. But part of that discussion is also working with ODOT. One of the biggest hangups we found in dealing with all of our ordinances is that, the feather banners in particular, is that there is no such thing as a straight line right-of-way on Highway 101. Properties go out into the road, properties don't go out into the road. So the ordinance is anticipating that we create what we call the travelway, which will simply define where the boundaries are. And it also anticipates that we will consider things such as obstructing of traffic, whether it's vehicle, pedestrian, or bicycle traffic, or any other traffic for that matter. We are meeting with ODOT tomorrow, where I will have an opportunity to discuss this with them, to get their opinion on it, so that I can bring that information back to you as part of your consideration.
Great. Thank you very much. All right, we have a third ordinance.
Your Honor, counsel, this is the first reading of ordinance 2019-28, an ordinance of the City of Lincoln City, amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 12, Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places, adding a new Chapter 1226, Small Wireless Telecommunication Facilities, to establish procedures and requirements for consideration and approval of wireless telecommunication facilities in city right-of-way. Ask for approval of first reading and setting second reading for October 14th. Again, I'm not asking for final approval today. I'm only asking for first reading. And I communicated this to you in an email, that Telecom Council, we have outside council that advises us on telecom, he's going to a conference with, like, a national thing and getting updated on some of the new developments. And so he asked me if we'd hold off until after he gets back from that. Now, he sent me the standards from the City of Tigard, which I adapted to our, match our code and hopefully make some sense in the city. But he hasn't had a chance to review that yet, and he wanted to get the input that whatever new developments there are this week. So that's why I'm asking you not to take final action, but I wanted to, I didn't want to put this off again. So it's been delayed a couple of times. So I did receive some comments from Counselor Casper. Thank you for reading it carefully. If there are any further questions or suggestions, I can talk to you offline or maybe even put you in contact with the outside council if I can't answer your questions. This is not specifically about 5G. We obviously have a great deal of preemption issues associated with telecom. So I know that some jurisdictions, like Eugene, and others, have decided to, you know, tilt against that windmill. I wasn't going to propose that you expend your resources going there. This is basically following the City of Tigard's lead. They kind of got out in front of it. The league has some materials now available, but, and I shared those with you confidentially because they're accompanied by some attorney comments that have been received. So that's where we are.
I do have?
Why don't we go ahead and put a motion on the table, and then we'll?
Just have staff. Okay, it's okay, I'll wait.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve first reading of ordinance 2019-28.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you. Questions?
And perhaps, Mr. Appicello, you can answer these without having to consult council. I just have a question about, three questions, actually. How does ODOT fit into this picture? Do they care, or do they already have?
ODOT has to approve anything on 101. So if you're Pacific Power and you want to put a light pole out on 101, it better be a light pole that's been approved by ODOT. So yes, they're involved. So whatever the provider under this ordinance wants to propose to say, hey, I want to put my facility inside a light pole and put it on, replace this light pole with mine, it better be acceptable to ODOT. So that's kind of between Pacific Power and ODOT and the provider to work out. I'm not going to dictate to them. We are going to give you a resolution that has attached to it the specifications of whatever is currently approved. And if they want to get, run something else up the light pole, they can do that. And if it's acceptable to ODOT, acceptable to Pacific Power, I don't think we'll stand in the way. That's why resolution, we can change it more easily.
My second or third question is, there's an area, a couple areas along the highway that the utilities are undergrounded. Is there something that we can put in our language saying that we will not approve poles being erected for the?
New poles?
Yeah, new poles for wireless within those areas.
Well, I actually had first written this ordinance as, we're not going to approve any new provider poles. You shall replace a light pole or a utility pole and place things inside, or you'll co-locate on one of those. And Telecom Council said, I can't do that. So, but I could prioritize and say, first, you shall, you know, co-locate, including, you know, placing, replacing the pole and putting all your stuff inside, all those options. And when we get down to it, if it was the last available option for the system to work, then they could put a new pole. I hadn't thought about the fact that we just spent a ton of money to underground.
Three million dollars.
Facilities. So again, it's, they're not wires, of course. We're just talking about poles.
I know.
But I will add something and run it by outside council.
Thank you very much. And my third question, I have one more. Okay, just a minute. Okay, the network providers are required to send the city locations of their equipment that, and that's their equipment that's in current use or soon to be activated, but do we want to know where their equipment, I mean, years down the road? Do we want to know where their equipment is when it's not in use any longer? And is there a provision in there for them to remove it when they aren't using it anymore?
I'm not sure. We talked about the whole life cycle of that equipment, but I can run that by outside council.
You know, those boxes, we still don't know what they look like, but those exterior boxes, we might want those to go away if they aren't using that system anymore.
Okay, so we want proper disposal of obsolete equipment.
Thank you.
And we want it off the pole if it's not, we don't just want it up there and being an eyesore if it's not doing anything. Okay.
Thank you.
Good points.
Yeah, very good.
Any other comments, thoughts? I did note that, you know, I was going to chastise Tigard and try to give Mr. Appicello a compliment, but he ruined it for me because he indicated that he had rewritten all this. And once again, the length of ordinances, you know, astound me in reading. So I was going to blame Tigard, but Mr. Appicello, you get it again. We have a, we have a motion and a second. No further discussion? Roll call, please.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
And Hinton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And again, consensus that we'll do second reading on 10th of, or 14th of October? That's right. After outside council can take a look at updates. Thank you. And our, one, two, three, four, fourth ordinance.
Your Honor, counsel, this is first reading of ordinance 2019-31, an ordinance of the City of Lincoln City, providing for a leviation of a final assessment for the sewer connection abatement and improvement project known as the 6330 Northeast Port Drive Project, and fixing and spreading said final assessment amount against the property by lien. Ask for approval of first reading, and if unanimous, move on to second reading. This is the conclusion of the dangerous building order at this address.
Entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the first reading of ordinance 2019-31.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve with a second. Discussion? Is this the one where hopefully we'll change the mayor's name on the ordinance?
Yes.
And update it, you know?
I apologize.
We had a new one.
Once again, nothing at, you know, the existing mayor, just?
I will point out that the copy for signature has your name on it, and I will say that the name of the mayor was incorrect and has been replaced with Dick Anderson, Mayor.
Your apologies for errors are accepted.
What's really truly sad about that is that that went through about four of us, and none of us picked it up.
I know the system, you know?
But it's more fun.
They were longing for the good old days.
You want to know how I discovered this today? It was when Vicki went to put the little red sticker on and said, oh, no.
Well, I was going to email Kathy, but, you know, why ruin her weekend, you know? Well, I was going to email Kathy, but you know, why ruin her weekend, you know, and she. Let's see, I don't think I had any other smart remark for that one. So we have a motion with a second to approve first reading. Roll call, please.
Kuz?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Your Honor, counsel, this is second reading ordinance two thousand nineteen dash thirty one, an ordinance of the city of Lincoln City providing for the levy of a final assessment for the sewer connection abatement and improvement project known as the six three three zero Northeast Port Drive Project and fixing and spreading said final assessment amount against the property by lien, asking for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve the second reading and adopt ordinance twenty nineteen dash thirty one.
I'll second.
We have a second from Counselor Mark. Motion to approve second reading with a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
And Kuz?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. We then have a resolution, resolution two thousand nineteen dash twenty one, a resolution accepting the housing strategy plan for Lincoln County and its cities. I don't know how we make a change to the actual plan, but I was hoping we could take credit for Lindsay's work in this plan rather than giving her off to the county. And somehow, in the acknowledgement, front page, it has her name as county. So once again, we're snubbed from those folks down south. Lindsay, we know you were there. Thank you very much. And you, we know you're ours. Any discussion?
I do. I have a long list, so if someone wants to go first, maybe they'll.
Could I just point out something, though?
Please.
I spoke to the county council and their resolution kind of hedged a little bit. It said, we approve it in concept. So I made sure that our resolution approves it in concept and also clarifies that any implementation of this plan must follow city land use process. So we're not, doesn't, we're not doing anything in here unless we follow or S one nine seven six ten, give notice to the LCD and whatever we do in amending anything has to follow that process. Because this hasn't followed that process. Just, county hedged in the same way, so I'm letting you know that's in here.
Perfect.
Counselor?
On my list?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, this, this is regarding the resolution, not of the content of the strategy.
Oh dang it.
Yes, we're only dealing with the strategy. You're.
I was just gonna, I had a bunch of things about.
What's in that?
About the plan itself.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Forget it.
But, but, that's why the, the resolution has, you know, the, the wording that, thank you very much. Because I, I think, as I looked at the strategy and listening, it, it shows one recognition that the issue, housing, is a regional issue, that we're, we municipalities are willing to work together to find some answers and if possible and sensible, we would share.
If the council is interested in exploring these in greater details, the recommendations, we can schedule that for a, a different time. And because there's, there's good information, there's some recommendations, there's a lot that says Lincoln City has done this and done this and done that. And so if, if, if the council's interested in going into more depth of the, of the document itself, then we certainly can bring that for a further discussion.
And I, I think that would be helpful primarily because one of our, our top goals was housing. And if, if we're missing the beat somewhere and this, these kind of studies and strategies can help or tweak our ordinances, I, I think it's worth that work session. Is that probably the place, Counselor?
Probably.
So is, is there enough comfortable reading in the resolution that gives you degree of comfort that we're not bound to do anything, but we're certainly recognizing the work done and the potential of sharing and partnering? And, I mean, that's, that's how I read the resolution.
I just, if I could ask just a general question. There was, for example, there was one thing, I attended maybe two of these gatherings and I, I know that Counselor Casper was with me at lea, at least one of them. And we provided information and it's incorrect in the plan. I'm just wondering, is there some way to approve the resolution, but also let them know we would like to send corrections? Because, you know, if it's incorrect, then how's that helping everyone? Especially as, as I'm reading it, I'm looking at what other cities are doing for, you know, for how they're, and if it's incorrect, then I'm not reading it accurately.
I don't know if they will change their document, but we certainly can send that to them as well as to all of the other entities that participated in this, so they at least get a letter from us.
I would, I would just recommend a separate motion to send a correction or authorize the city manager or planning director to send a cor, corrections that should be made. And everybody can stick a page in there that says correction.
We can do, if we're going to have a work session, we can do that as a follow.
Yeah, and that, there may be more which come out of it too.
Have more time to look at it. Okay.
So we do have a, do we? A motion on the resolution?
No.
No?
Do you want one? Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash twenty one and accept the Lincoln City housing strategy plan.
Second. We have a motion to approve with a second from Counselor Parsons. Any further discussion?
Just to make sure that all that, that the city attorney said is covered in that.
After the fact, yeah.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
And Mark?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, we have special order of business, Lincoln Square ADA improvement and US one oh one.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So you've seen quite a bit of this project and just for the public, Lincoln Square is City Hall, it's the City Hall building. And on July twenty eighth, City Council approved a cooperative improvement agreement for the city to bid and manage construction of the ODOT project, which was US one oh one from Southeast Eighth to Southeast Fourteenth Street. And it's a ramp, a pedestrian ramp project, so they're replacing ramps that are not ADA. And as part of the city's Lincoln Square ADA improvements, ODOT estimated their project would cost around four hundred and fifty thousand. And so the Lincoln Square ADA improvements included upgrading the ADA ramps, crossing at Highway one oh one intersection with Burger King. And this included adding a crosswalk on that north side of that intersection, so it'll look like a real intersection and be safer. We've had many accidents there with pedestrians. So the project also includes improvements to the access in the front of City Hall. And we've been planning that for quite a while and it just kind of maxed into the whole intersection improvement. So we're trying to make sure that the entrance meets ADA requirements. And so it'll be really nice, we'll have two places to cross, you don't have to go across the Burger King access to get to City Hall when you're walking here. And so the ped ramps include Southeast Ninth Street, middle and south entrance to McKay's Market, Southwest Eleventh Street, Southwest Twelfth Street, and Southeast Devils Lake Road, and Southwest Thirteenth Street and Southwest Fourteenth Street. So Public Works Department completed the design of the Lincoln Square ADA improvements in-house and ODOT provided their design for the ramp project. And the joint project was advertised for bid on July tenth, twenty nineteen. City Public Works Department opened bids for the project on August first and two bids were received. And so one from KNE Escavating at nine hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and ninety, and one from Emery Incents Construction Group LLC for one million, three thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy five cents. So our lowest responsive and responsible bidder, excuse me, was KNE Incorporated in the amount of that, nine hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and ninety. So we did have our engineer's estimate correct until we added that other sidewalk, or crosswalk on the highway. And so our portion is four hundred and three thousand, one hundred and eighty-two and ODOT's share is five hundred and thirteen thousand, eight dollars. And in their agreement, they did not add any contingency. So, you know, they told us to go ahead and move forward and they'll have to make up that difference somehow. So the city council approved in fiscal year nineteen twenty budget, two hundred and fifty thousand for the city project. And if city council approves, the balance of funds would come from the Southwest Twenty Ninth Street Improvement Project and we would move, push that to the following year. And that project was two hundred thousand. So then we have our, our table that we always put in here, we're, we're only doing a construction contingency of twenty thousand. We have very, very good plans and the low bidder is KNE and they don't tend to change orders for, for anything. And we think we might be able to keep the loops for the signals on that north section and that will save some money too. That's probably about twenty-seven thousand, so. So we'll do, we'll do our best to keep, you know, as much of that overlay money as we can. So our staff recommends the construction contract be awarded to KNE Escavating in the amount of the nine hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and ninety with a twenty thousand dollar contingency. And so that would be a total of nine hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars.
Some questions? Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, Lila. This would be nice. I know that's problematic. Few things. Why is our estimate so off?
Because of that signal improvement that we added. So we, we started without doing that north crosswalk. There's no crosswalk there now. And so you'd have to put in the, the pedestals, the buttons, to install that crossing.
And so is it the engineer, the engineer's estimation that, that would cost another two hundred thousand to do that?
That's what the bid is. That, that's actual construction bid that we received.
I'm, I'm, I'm understanding. So I'm just, I see the numbers and I, I don't understand what pieces we're missing in our engineer's estimate?
It was that signal section, that north crosswalk.
Okay. So is it, but it's not on there at all, right? So that five eighty-nine, the engineer's estimate?
Um.
Is not five eighty-nine? Right?
Yes, correct.
I'm asking you what would have been the engineer's estimate?
It was, I'm sorry, I'm trying to remember exactly what he had, but it was, it was almost the budgeted, original budgeted amount, the two hundred and fifty thousand.
On top of that five eighty-nine?
No, subtracted from that. I didn't bring the bid sheet with me. I should have printed it out.
So, Counselor?
So you're, I think you're right. It would have been added to that, not subtracted.
I, as we get these bids, I look to see our engineer's estimate to what they bid. Sometimes they're in line, sometimes they're not. And so I'm just trying to ask, do we need to readjust our estimates or are they overbidding grossly?
No, we just added more to the project, so.
Before our estimate, before our engineer added?
Yeah.
A line of the north side? Okay. Okay. Secondly, when they cross the street, there's nothing really to direct them how to get to the library entrance?
Right, and so.
Does this include that?
It does.
Because that's, as you can look at their.
That's, that's a huge part of the project and that's what started the project in the first place.
Is once they're on our property?
Mm-hmm.
There will be something to do within that?
Yes.
In our property, painted areas?
Yes.
And also on the south side?
On the.
Or, I'm sorry. Well, no, that's, I guess that's too.
Yeah, it would just be coming over to City Hall.
There's not a, there's not a sidewalk at Southeast, Southeast Ninth. Will there be one across that way?
No.
It's just at that.
It's just that Burger King intersection. So it's all the ramps on the Burger King side and the City Hall side. And it also includes a place for our new sign.
Okay.
New entrance sign to City Hall.
With direction on the ground of where pedestrians are to walk.
Yeah, we have a really nice design.
Is there, are there designs to show how to cross across, if you will, at, across from Southeast Ninth? You know, there's that.
No.
Because there's, where we just took out that.
We have the island and.
We took that island out. There's another, that's a, a large crossing area and cars and people will kind of, I don't know what to do.
Yeah, we'll have.
If there was a crosswalk.
We'll have to address that. It's, yeah, it's all at that signal, so.
Because we're going to redo the whole parking lot again, right?
Yes, this is the first phase of the parking lot. So we're going to pave it, we're going to take the concrete out because it's all breaking up.
In this bid? The entire parking lot?
Not the entire parking lot, the first, first phase of it. So just past the islands, where you're talking about people crossing over to the front door.
Because then you're walking across parking spaces.
Yes, and we're going to have that all painted, there'll be a crossing there, so people will know where, where they can get to the front door.
Is it at this time that we'll move the bus stop from being underneath to being outside?
Yes, that was part of the plan. And we've been requested to have the bus stop actually on the highway. What we were going to do was keep the bus from coming in with this plan.
Right.
And have them come in the other entrance.
Right.
But now they're talking about the highway, so we'll have to move and put a bus shelter at the highway because most of our bus stops are on the highway.
Right.
Without pullouts.
For greater safety, I believe, also for people blocking that area.
Yeah. So we'll be doing that ahead, probably even ahead of this project, so.
Thank you very much.
Other questions, Counselor? Anybody? Lila, the, this project is two parts, one, ODOT, and ODOT's piece is simple, so I'm using simple language, but really the redoing their ramps, their corners with ADA for ADA compliance. And that, that's what makes up their portion of funding and projects.
Correct. They are also including the two driveways, not, not the Burger King driveway, but the other two driveways at McKay's Market. And so they're going to take those out and make them actual driveways and so they'll all be concrete. So that will help, you know, match in the, the ramps and everything.
So the south, the southern entrance as well?
Southern, the southern two entrances are in ODOT's bid.
Oh, okay.
So they're, they're doing those.
There's nothing else other than on, on our, our property, those corners and, and ADA?
Right.
So I, and then the other portion is ours and that's primarily the City Hall area and shopping. But, but it includes the walkway across one oh one.
Yes.
So we're paying, have to pay for that.
Right.
And the sidewalk going north from the street, the Burger King's drive, entrance, right?
Right, right. So we will be fixing the ramps on, on both sides.
But they are, they're fixing the ramps, correct?
Well, we're, we're doing.
In their bid.
The Burger King section, that's what we're paying for.
Okay.
And our entrance. So that's why it's.
So I, the other thing I'm looking for is that, one, this project not only closes some of the sidewalk gap on one oh one, it also hits, and so correct me when I'm wrong, it, it hits an awful lot of our ADA non-compliant from our, our master list that we've.
Yes.
Come up with of ADA kind of things that we were wanting to correct.
Correct.
Correct? So this.
These are all in there. We, we actually did that ADA study.
Right.
On one oh one for ODOT.
Right.
That we have.
And that, that was part of, I forget the number of four thousand or some big number of opportunities, so this.
So this is taking away.
It's a big, big win of taking a lot of.
Yeah, this was actually a section that ODOT was sued for.
Right.
So, they, they started with this one. I think they're doing a few other ones around the state.
So, I'm, I'm comfortable with the projects there, and we're managing those?
Yes, we're...
And we know K&amp;E well from other...
Yes, because it's, this whole project's going to be really difficult, being on the highway and on those corners, and it's busy, so...
What, so what time of year are we doing this?
Um, we'll be doing it, as soon as this is approved, we'll start getting the contract to them, so it'd probably be in November.
So, we can, you know, make sure...
Get a winter project.
Make sure we're done by Christmas rush or holiday rush?
There's always a rush. There, there is no off time on 101 anymore.
Okay.
But, yes, we'll...
So, the, the other question I had, now flip, because I, even though you attached it, I couldn't find the Southwest Twenty-Ninth Street project. So, I, I don't know what that was?
Oh, that...
That we gave, just gave up.
That was paving, and I actually put it off last year, too, so it's one of those that I've moved around a little bit. But, it's improvement to some storm drainage, sidewalk, and overlay.
On Twenty-Ninth, from 101, heading west?
Yes, and when we did the Nelskot project, they actually went into Twenty-Ninth quite a ways, so, and it's where they left off with their new project, by that little parking lot.
Oh, yes, right.
But, it can wait.
Okay, because that, that's what I like to, I look at, and I, I appreciate that we're, we're making a good decision on which projects we're giving up and for...
I think this, this one's so much more important.
Yeah, I would agree.
Safety, and so many people walking.
Okay. Any other questions? Entertained, then, a motion? Who hasn't made one tonight? Come on, get a, get in the record book. Okay, Rick. Pressure's on. Age, he's...
Two forty-two.
Just a recommendation.
Yeah.
Redler.
Edward.
Well, okay. I, I, what are we recommending or rewarding?
Recommend, approve, you recommend.
I move that we recommend that the construction contract be awarded to K&amp;E Escavating Inc. in the amount of nine hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars with a construction contingency of twenty thousand dollars.
Second. We have a second from Mr. Parsons. And a motion, questions? Yes, Councilor?
How negatively, how, I mean, it, I could be a lot of negative repercussions for doing it. No night building, no night work?
Um, that's kind of, that'll be up to the contractor on this one, but K&amp;E really proved themselves when they did the Nelskot project.
Yeah.
And so, we'll do traffic control.
I can see a lot of...
We'll work, we always work with McKay's Market whenever we do anything in that area, so...
Not to hurt, not to hurt their business, and, you know, as much as possible.
Yeah, any traffic, any traffic change is, is difficult.
Could really negatively affect them.
Any other, other questions?
Sure.
Roll call, please. Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hogland?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Lila. That ought to keep you busy for a while.
Yeah, along with the Niotsu one, and the Nineteenth, Twenty-third.
By the way, the bridge, you know, the bridge.
The bridge, the waterway.
All right, city manager?
Just one item, Mr. Mayor. I'm just confirming our upcoming work meetings. The first one I have scheduled is Saturday, October fifth, at eight AM. It will go until twelve PM. The topics would be our waste stream or trash reductions, long-range water planning, and the village's master plan. The second one is Monday, October seventh, from one to five PM. This would be a joint meeting with the Planning Commission, and we would discuss the sign ordinance, the design standard ordinance, and the food truck ordinance, all being proposed to the city council in the near future. And then, the third one that we have scheduled would be November fourth, which is a Monday, one PM to five PM in the council chambers. Topics would include the Fourth of July and fireworks, construction excise tax, and a gas tax. And so, I'm just confirming those dates with you now, and if you're okay with them, we will schedule them.
What was the very first date?
October fifth.
October fifth, and then the seventh, and then November fourth.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We'll not be here October fifth.
Nor will I.
Nor will I.
Fifth.
The fifth of October?
No.
So, how many?
Three of us at least.
Three?
The other times, then, to look at that would be October twelfth or October twenty-sixth, if it is on a Saturday. I made a conference on the nineteenth.
Both is fine for me.
Not for me.
Not for me.
No, I'll be here, it's okay.
Police Academy.
The twenty-sixth, I'm open.
Twenty, twenty-sixth of October?
Yeah.
It's a maybe. Deanna doesn't know.
I'm sorry.
I don't have any weekdays, huh?
We could do it during the weekdays if you would like. We haven't discussed anything other than Mondays. Of course, the, the seventh, we have one scheduled. The fourteenth is a, is a city council meeting. I'm attending the city manager's conference on the twenty-first, and then the twenty-eighth is a, a city council meeting night, and then on November fourth, we have, we have one scheduled at that time.
How about October sixteenth, Wednesday?
That would work, that, that works wonderful for us, anytime you'd like to.
I can't be here.
I'm not in town on Wednesdays.
Okay, all right. Wednesdays aren't good. That's what I'm trying to eliminate is...
Tuesday, the twenty-ninth?
Twenty what?
Twenty-ninth of October.
Tuesday.
Only if it's a morning.
Yeah, morning.
Yeah, it's not going to be.
At a new, new urban renewal meeting.
On Halloween.
So, then what time on Tuesday?
Of the twenty-ninth?
Yeah.
Before six?
AM?
PM.
Morning would be great.
Yeah, we have a six, we have a police academy.
Morning's the easier, yeah.
Oh, Tuesday.
Yeah, so morning, we could.
Is everybody...
Morning.
How you run on Tuesday, the twenty-ninth?
Tuesday, the twenty-ninth will work just fine.
So, what's it, is that at eight to noon?
Four, noon, or whatever, about four.
Eight-thirty to noon, or what? What are you thinking, somebody?
Eight to noon works.
Eight to noon's fine.
Go seven.
Ten to one.
Ten to two.
Ten to one.
Send the bus and pick us up.
This, in, in looking at coordinating a few things with the Planning Commission and what their schedule is on some of these land use issues, this might juggle up a little bit on the topics, but we'll still be looking at three topics per meeting, so...
So, what works on the twenty-ninth for you? Now, this is in lieu of the ten, five.
This is in lieu of the, of the fifth.
Of the fifth.
Right.
Yeah, reasonable. How about nine to one?
Nine to one?
I want to make sure we're talking October twenty-ninth.
October, October twenty-nine.
Tuesday, October twenty-nine. Nine to one o'clock, that works great for the staff, we're here, so...
Is that all right for everybody?
That works for me.
And that is no fifth, then, right? No October?
No, no fifth.
Do we get lattes and scones?
No.
Lattes and scones.
You can go out to lunch after.
Bring it with you.
Okay.
Nine...
Pass that on to Courtney.
What day is this now? Sorry.
The twenty-ninth, Tuesday of October.
Nine, nine to eleven?
One, uh, yes, nine to one.
Nine to one, okay.
My son's thirty-sixth birthday.
Hey, I just turned thirty-seven yesterday.
Thirty-second birthday.
Turned what?
Yesterday was my birthday.
Your birthday?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, so we've got officially three work sessions, one of them being a joint with planning.
Yep.
You all right, everybody?
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, that wasn't hard.
Didn't we do some surfing?
Anything else, Ron?
No, that's it.
How about Mr. Appicello? Nothing?
Just to remind you, you have actions, if any, based on executive session.
We do, but don't try to jump ahead on my agenda. Are either one of you attending any of this stuff at League of Cities?
Not, I'm going to the city attorney's meeting on Friday, that's it.
And I will be there.
Good. All right, I know some of the councilors are going, so that's great. Okay, and of course, all that was just a stall to get to the next item, so I could control it, and it's, any actions based on work sessions or executive sessions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to move to direct staff to negotiate property discussed in our executive session, including using options B and C.
There's a motion, and motion with a second to direct staff to negotiate... Property price on the item number one, utilizing B and C programs.
Two and three, I don't know if it was A, B, C, or one, two.
Options, it was options B and C.
Yes.
Including options B and C.
And that had a second?
I'll second it.
I already did, you did. About five minutes.
Counselor Hinton, Counselor Hinton seconded, and then Casper approved, mode. Casper, and then Hinton.
Mover, second. Mover shaker.
We're going for points.
Right.
You moved my microphone, so I've got to use it.
It feels like it, you're...
Oh, man.
That's good.
Any, we've got a motion and a second, any, not really any discussion, so roll call, please.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hogland?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
And Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you very much. Any other motions?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to direct staff to engage in discussions with the Nelskot property acquisition.
Okay. There's a motion on the table. I'll second that. We have a second from Counselor Mark. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hogland?
Yes.
Coos?
No.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
And Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Any other actions desired? Hearing none? Let's move on to, this would be time for any other additional comments from the public. Again, thank you all for staying with us. And how about comments from councilors? Counselor Hogland?
Yes. Do we, does the city have a policy in which, if we're working with contractors that have negative, and is there a way in which public, the public can, I don't know, I got a call that stating that they interacted with a contractor that the city uses, and it was very negative, and they, they don't know how to respond or have that, and what's the city's stance on contractors who have multiple negative public interactions? And is there a policy in which they can express themselves, rather, really?
Yeah, the, the easiest and the best way for them to express themselves would be either through comments through the city council that gets relayed to us, or to contact either me or Lila directly, and, and we will certainly listen to that. As to how it affects our continuing, ongoing work with that, we do evaluate, we do evaluate the negative experiences that we have, and they come forward at the time we're presenting for bids with you.
Okay.
Counselor, I, I, the only question I would have on that, on a city project, so, or just someone that they happen to know that works occasionally, get bids, wins a bid?
It's an ongoing contract that the city has?
With the city, okay.
Yes.
Yep, that's good, that's all I want.
I'll, I guess I'll email you?
Please do.
Okay.
Any, anything else?
Right. No, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Mark?
I attended an interesting meeting of the Midcoast Water Partnership Plan out at the, the Slets, Confederated Tribes of Slets Indians hosted it, had a wonderful meal. Long, interesting meeting, although I, I, I did kind of have the sense that there were a lot of water experts, and these are all Lincoln County municipal people, I, for the most part, and, and regional interests. And I kind of thought the meeting was sort of preaching to the choir with a lot of information that probably most of those people had, and I was looking forward to, well, I'm looking forward to that group moving ahead to propose solutions. There are great concerns about future water needs in this county, and I, I do hope we keep that in mind when we consider what, what we do with our water rates as far as encouraging conservation and, and those sorts of things.
Thank you for attending that. I understand, too, it's well attended, it was well attended, over a hundred people or close to. Also, that it was an excellent meal, and thank you to the tribe. But, the feedback I got back was very similar to what you're, again, a lot of experts and, but clearly a concern for future water. Counselor Hinton?
Yes, you all on council have received a confidential communication from me via the city attorney. I'm requesting that council hold an executive session to discuss this matter. It was about a week ago. Councilor Attorney, would you like to?
And that's a real property acquisition, one nine two six sixty-two E and F confidential record.
Is, is there any scheduled executive session prior to one of the council meetings that we could tap into or have one?
You could, if you're looking at the upcoming meetings, you have, again, a work meeting on the seventh, and then you have your regular city council meeting on the fourteenth.
I, I seem to recall Allison had something she wanted to bring to executive session.
She does, and that will be on the fourteenth.
So, would it be possible to add another item?
Sure.
To that, we'd have...
Sure.
Time? So, if...
Yeah.
Yeah, they've changed earlier. Is, is that our consensus, that we add another item on the executive session that we're already having?
Riley's deep in thought.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
On the fourteenth. Okay, anything else? Counselor Parsons?
Yeah, come out and support your, uh, your youth sports, uh, Wednesday, middle school volleyball, three-thirty, is playing at home, and at four o'clock, middle school football has their first home game. Everybody else is out of town this week, so...
So, if you need some sports fix, Wednesday?
We'll be there Wednesday.
Wednesday, and, and when do, where and when, most of them start?
At Taft, uh, football starts at four o'clock, and, uh, volleyball starts at three-thirty.
Okay, great. Judy?
Um, yes, um, I went to a foreign country since our last meeting, and I wanted to share that our borders are safe, because I got in and out of the country with an illegal passport? And didn't know it until I got to the airport in Vermont, and they said, oh, you didn't sign your passport, I was, oh, good, and I proceeded to go through security with nothing in my pocket, except three vitamin pills and a safety pin, and there was supposed to be nothing, so, um, I'm back safe, but, um, I did bring back this little piece of information from the parks in Quebec City, which I found fascinating, there's no, no litter there, absolutely no litter, and this is a sign in their park, they say, no alcohol, no riding bike, no marijuana, no roller skating, no dog poop, but what you can do, this is very interesting, and something to think about, you can walk your bike, you can walk your dog with a leash, and you can pick up garbage. Quite a phenomenal concept, but when people did toss garbage, they'd look at you like you, you just committed murder, and you'd better pick up that piece of garbage, so I thought, um, our neighbors to the north are doing very well in their garbage department.
And with all, sign, no words, just sign it, or, uh?
No words.
Pictures, yeah.
Yeah, everybody got it.
Well done. When notice French and English, you know?
Yep.
Very nice, thank you for sharing.
Thank you for sharing that.
Anything else? Diane, you're okay?
I'm good.
I have, uh, a couple things, one, um, you, you all got the notice and sharing with the public that the Regatta Park deed restrictions, uh, were lifted, uh, we've gone through that judicial process, and, um, so, that throws the burden to, uh, parks, or, you know, I guess no burden, we're in good, good shape, the deed restrictions are lifted.
Parks and, and the Explore Lincoln City process is special event permanent, so...
Great, all right, so that's, that's good news. Other things, um, we have tomorrow, um, I take it back, Wednesday, which is the twenty-fifth, Wednesday, there's actually a climate change, uh, discussion in the library at, uh, Lincoln City at six PM, you're all welcome. Earlier in the morning, you can go to coffee with the mayor at nine AM, uh, a respectable hour, uh, at Salt in the Outlet Mall, and then for those that are hungry, um, encourage you to maybe attend a dinner fundraiser for CERT at the Saint Peters Fisherman's Lutheran Church, that's on Saturday, the twenty-eighth, five to seven, it's actually lasagna, um, but that supports the, uh, CERT organization in Lincoln City. Anything else, go to the order? Hearing none? Seven-thirty-three, we can call it good?
Wow.
Oh, that kid scared me at first.
Mike, sir?